Chair Murphy, I see your hand is up. Chair Murphy, it's seven o'clock if you want to call the meeting to order.
Good evening, it looks like it's seven o'clock, can we go ahead and get started?
Yes. Do you want me to do the roll call?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you Brittany. Okay, great, I'll wait until we get a confirmation from staff.
Chair Murphy, are you not able to hear us?
I can hear you.
Thanks Jonathan.
Noah or JP, can you hear us?
Lauren, can we go ahead and get started, it looks like we have all of the commissioners who are attending this evening.
Can you hear staff JP or Noah, can you hear the clerk?
Chair Murphy, why don't I go check to see what's going on, she's in the other room.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
One second.
Okay.
Right here. Can you unmute me?
Okay.
Hang on one second. We had some technical difficulties. Okay, alright, let me try. What is that?
Chair Murphy, can you hear us now?
It still shows me.
Chair Murphy, can you hear us now?
Hi Chair Murphy, they're having some technical difficulties, they're trying to get connected right now.
Not a problem, we'll give it a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Chair Murphy, we've got one here called in, so we're going to take a look at it. Chair Murphy. Chair Murphy, can you hear us, we called in.
Yes, we can hear you guys.
Okay, I can go ahead and take roll.
Wonderful. I'm sorry about that, we haven't kicked stuff off yet, we were just waiting to make sure everyone was on, so I'm hearing a little bit of an echo. Would you mind going on mute for a second and then I'll call the meeting to order?
Go ahead.
Thank you, I will call to order the City of Cattati Planning Commission meeting on June 7th, 2021. Can we have a roll call please?
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Vice Chair Lima.
Here.
Chair Murphy.
Here.
And we show Commissioner Hancock is absent.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll move into item C which is approval of the minutes. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from? Thank you.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of, and I did go ahead and view the minutes or the video for the meeting of Monday, December 7th, 2020, so I can vote on those. Just to clarify because I was absent on that. Do you want these individual or do you want them all at once?
I believe we can do them all at once.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 7th, 2020, Monday, March 15th for 2021, and I think that's it. We have one more?
We have one more, December 20, February 1st, 2021, and March 15th, 2021.
A Monday, February 1st, 2021. All three meetings, I'll make a motion to approve those.
Make it a second? I'll second the motion. Thank you. Can we do a roll call for approval?
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner Rodriguez, okay. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lima.
Yes.
Chair Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, next is item D, any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Okay, thank you Donna. Then we will move into item E which is oral or written comment. If anyone has oral comment to provide, raise your hand, say your name for the record, and please limit your comments to items not already agendized for tonight's discussion. I will hand it over to staff to help us handle any public comment.
For our attendees tonight, if you can use your recent icon, we will call on you, and if you're dialing attendee, just dial start night. Chair Murphy, at this time there's no public comment.
Thank you so much, then we'll move into item F which is matters at hand. Starting with our first item, the consideration of a conditional use permit for auto and RV trailer sales at 80223 Gravenstein Highway. This is additional information provided by staff for this item. I think I may, I'm not sure if this is just a title slide that I'm looking at or if there's.
Okay, sorry about that, I was muted.
No problem.
Yeah, so this is the agenda item F1 tonight, which is consideration of a use permit for auto and trailer sales, vehicle and trailer sales at 8023 Gravenstein Highway. Use permit runs with the land, but the applicant in this case is Sonoma RV. The principal behind Sonoma RV, his name is Ryan Henrikson. He also is the owner of North Bay Motors, which is the downtown, kind of right downtown, that's the kind of a corner between George and La Plaza, where you've seen those quite nice used cars for sale there. And lately, some trailers coming out, this picture is actually from right there on Old Redwood Highway. The idea is to relocate the trailer sales to a site along Gravenstein Highway and then have this lot continue to function for used car sales. Though there could be some interchanging between the two locations. So I would expect that this Gravenstein Highway application includes, though it's going to be primarily trailer sales, it could include cars as well, and both are allowed under the use permit definition. Use, under the use definition, excuse me. So next slide please. So as I mentioned, this is regarding RV and auto sales at 8023 Gravenstein Highway. Use permit is required prior to initiating business like this. They are proposing to operate from 8am to 8pm, there'd be two employees, which right now would be the owner and one other person, his partner. And they expect approximately 15 customers per day to visit. The site has, includes a 1,520 square foot commercial office building. The previous use was DC Electric, used it as a contractor's yard out there. So maintained offices in the office, and then in the area where he would be displaying his RVs, that area was previously used as basically a contractor's yard, a storage yard for equipment and materials. And we'll be looking at that a little bit more. So the sales office would be in the commercial building up front, and then the RV and auto display would be in the yard area just north of, behind and north of the commercial building. We are including a condition that they can, because all the trailers would be hidden, they, we are allowing them to display a trailer in the front so that they can attract someone to the business. However, there would be similar to any car sales in the city, there's no pennants, flag balloons, etc. type advertising. And we need the business to provide for 15 parking spaces. There are currently seven delineated spaces there, but there's sufficient area on the property to accommodate eight additional spaces should they need it. But we're really not expecting 15 parking spaces to be used at one time, it's just not the type of business that generates that level of parking. But according to our provisions, that's the kind of parking that is required, given the square footage of both the commercial building and the sales area. Next slide please. This is the location here, out on Gravenstein Highway. Next slide. And then kind of zooming in, this is the property, it's the highlighted property in the center. And you can start to see some of the adjacent land uses. To the west is a trucking facility, they, it's like a semi trucking facility, west of that is another trucking facility. Just immediately to the east of this property, those are two antique stores, kind of right along Highway 116, and then they actually have RV storage back behind it. Moving towards the east, we then have, these are the Small Animal Hospital and Large Animal Hospital, Cattati Veterinary Services. Hospital, Cattati Veterinary Services. To the south are some residences, the residences are non-conforming in this commercial district. And then also, we have self-storage areas over there at the northeast corner of Medronee and, or excuse me, the southeast corner of Medronee and Highway 116. So, just so you have a visual idea, the RVs themselves seem to be compatible with both the trucking to the west and the RV storage to the east. Next slide, please. This is a picture of what the building looks like from the road, from Highway 116 looking north. That's would be the commercial sales office, and then the RV display yard would be located behind the sales office. Next slide, please. And then if you go down Locust, just to that, this is what the entrance into what, where the RVs would be displayed and stored. It's right off of Locust, so you enter off of Locust and not necessarily Gravenstein Highway. Next slide, please. This is more of a close-up of the site, as well as a plan of how it will be utilized. The property is on the image on the left, it is pretty much that central property. The property is composed of a commercial building in the front, that large kind of gravel storage yard area. And then heading north, those two duplexes that would not be part of this project, but they are on the property. And those are the, that's what the property looks like there. So just, just south of those two duplexes, actually, yeah, each of those are two duplexes, so there's four units there. But just south of that, you can see a fence. That fence would be extended east-west all the way across, so it would be that lower kind of gravel yard area would be the area where the RVs would be stored and displayed. And then again, all the way to the south, the commercial building where the sales, sales would take place and offices for the employees. Next slide, please. So that's not a whole lot to discuss about it. Our recommendation is that you approve, adopt a resolution approving a use permit to allow RV and auto sales at 8023 Gravenstein Highway. And we'll just add that it's been reviewed by all the departments here at the city, and there are some fairly generic conditions of approval, mostly focused on making sure that everything is ADA accessible and providing parking as needed. And with that, I will be available for any questions, and I'm not certain if Ryan was able to join us tonight or not. I don't see his name unless he's a call-in, but I don't see him as included as one of the attendees. But I might, I can probably answer any questions that he might have. And that was that, I'll go. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the overview. We'll start with questions from the commission. I'll start with Commissioner Moore.
Okay, so I just had a couple of questions, JP. Just about the landscaping, because I know there's kind of some mature trees on the property. Are those slated to be capped or?
Yeah, they're, the only actual activity that they're proposing to do is to extend that fence that was just south of the duplexes, to extend that fence to kind of just lock out that, just make that yard area smaller for just their particular location. There's no proposed removal of trees, and there's no proposed interior modifications except for the ADA requirements that were required from that, so no tree removal.
And then I had another question, so you said that there is going to be able to have cars there, so are the trailer sales downtown going to just move over there, so there won't be any trailers downtown anymore?
That's the idea, because the use permit that runs with car sales downstairs only speaks to cars. So we're talking to Ryan, that's what he wants to do, is run his trailer sales out at this location, and it would be just cleaner with the use permit that exists for the downtown auto sales. Though, I will say the definition does allow for vehicle and trailer sales, so you could see, you know, you could see a trailer to still downtown. But the idea is to relocate the trailers to Gravenstein Highway and then have that area function as primarily for cars.
Okay, thank you, those were my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. We'll move on to Commissioner Rodriguez. Any questions, Commissioner Rodriguez? You're on mute right now. Well, I think, but we can hear you, you may be breaking up a bit, I'll let you know if we're not able to understand your question. All right. Sorry to interrupt. I think that we are having trouble understanding the question. I wonder if it would be possible to get off the phone and we could hold off and move on to, uh, Lemus?
Okay, so, no, I didn't have too many questions, I had one question about, normally there's a 10-foot setback, but you're allowing a 5-foot setback, is this all the way around the property because it's already, because of the way the trees are or the way the setting's already set?
Thank you for bringing that up. There is a section in the code that speaks specifically to outdoor storage. So anybody that is storing materials outdoors, any business, is required to set that, set any material must be setback 10 feet from the property line. It's just a standard that exists, though it can be, with the use permit, you can adjust that however you like. My recommendation is to go ahead and allow a 5-foot setback, because the 10-foot seemed like it was unnecessary. And the 5-foot setback maintains the distance so that you can still move around the trailers, it doesn't create a fire danger. And the uses of trailer sales next to trailer storage is completely compatible, so we didn't see any compatibility issues with the use and therefore had no, this isn't something that they requested, it was just a staff recommendation, that, just to give them a little more space in the back for, for their trailers.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it seems like the project fits into the area, the already existing area. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Lemus. Lauren, I do want to make sure throughout the meeting, if Commissioner Rodriguez has questions, we can address them. Do you know if it's easier for, to do an additional call-in number, or I can also turn it back over to Commissioner Rodriguez one more time and see if we can hear you now?
Chair Murphy, if it is available to Commissioner Rodriguez, he can dial in simultaneously.
Okay. We're still having trouble hearing, I'm so sorry, I apologize about that. What I think I'll do is, we'll move into any questions from the public, and then we will be following back up with the commissioners after.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. Just as a reminder again to our attendees tonight, if you use your right-hand icon to make a public comment, also for our dial-in caller, please use star nine to raise your hand. Chair Murphy, that will end the public comment.
Thank you. I'm going to do one more roundtable for the commission here, just to make sure there aren't any other additional questions or comments, starting with Commissioner Moore.
No, I don't have any additional questions, but I, I like the project, I think it fits in the area, and I like the idea that they're going to have some sales in Cattati, so I think it's a good fit.
Thank you.
Chair Murphy, if I can interject, please, I'm sorry. I do have a late hand.
Absolutely.
Caller, caller, it's the last four, 1061, go ahead.
We cannot hear you, you may be on mute still.
Hi, it's Commissioner Rodriguez.
Oh, hi, perfect, okay, perfect timing, because we'll open it up to any questions or comments that you have.
Yeah, I was just wondering how this location was chosen, and why does it feel like it's an ideal location?
Unfortunately, Ryan isn't available tonight to, since he's the one that found the location. I can say, in speaking to him at the time, he had a full lot of cars, he was doing a lot of car sales, it's just in the last couple of months. And so at that time, he was also looking at trailers, and so was definitely looking at a separate, trying to find a location for where those trailers could go. At the same time, DC Electric vacated that property, and so it came, became available. There's not a lot of commercial space in Cattati, so that one just seemed like the good location where this, this type of sales could go. I have to say that Ryan, I met Ryan probably about five years ago when he came in just to get a use permit to sell one or two cars, so we're on Aaron Street, out of one of the industrial buildings there, which we, which the city did award him. And then since he's moved down, he's just continued to grow and grow and grow, something that we like to see the businesses do here at Cattati, and Ryan has been one of those people. And I think this location is ideal because it is kind of like a highway-type commercial, you know, it's kind of near the entrance of town where we have, also, we have trucking, RV sales, storage facilities, so it kind of fits in with that particular flavor of commercial activity that we have, as well as the landscaping across the street.
Perfect, thank you.
Chair Murphy, I actually have another late hand.
Okay, great, we will open it up to that question.
The attendee with the email address Jade Couture, go ahead.
Hello, this is Ryan Henrikson, sorry, I'm just now joining in. I just wanted to follow up on what JP said as far as the ideal location. I did JP about five years ago, and I started off small, at a little industrial area location on Aaron Street, and from there I grew and acquired the location at 8020 Old Redwood Highway. And then about a year ago, I had approached JP about trailer sales, and after looking at the zoning and whatnot within the city, I thought the Gravenstein corridor was the perfect spot to obtain a use permit, and it just so happens that spot was available, so I leased it and pursued it, and I think it'll be a great fit. That's about it for now, if you have any other questions, feel free to ask, I am here now.
Thank you, Ryan. What I'd like to do, since Ryan is now participating in the meeting, is circle back and just double-check that none of the commissioners have questions specifically for Ryan, so we'll start with Commissioner Moore.
No, I have no questions for the applicant, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No, no further questions.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lemus?
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have additional questions, but I will say, in reviewing the information, and the presentation was very helpful, this does like a good fit for the location, and looking around the area, it doesn't seem to, to be highly impactful, as you mentioned, as far as any significant changes, so with that, that was the only comment I wanted to make, and we will move into a motion for this consideration, this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Great.
So I make a motion to approve the resolution of any commission, planning of approving conditional use permit to allow auto and recreational vehicle sales at 8023 Gravenstein Highway, with the address listed or the information listed.
No second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call? For approval?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. We will move into the next item, which is item F2. This is the preliminary and final design review of a kitchen and outdoor bar addition at 760 Commerce Avenue for Mi Rancho Restaurant. JP, do we have a presentation for this item?
I do have a brief presentation for this item as well. Thank you for putting that up. Let me just my computer here, have that. Okay, this is Agenda Item F2, this is design review, both preliminary and final, for a kitchen addition and an outdoor bar addition at 7600 Commerce Boulevard. And I do apologize, in a couple of locations, I wrote avenue, it is Commerce Boulevard, not Commerce Avenue, and that includes the resolution, so I just do want to highlight that error that I did write Commerce Avenue on the resolution and a couple of places in the staff report, but it is Commerce Boulevard. But anyways, but, yeah, let's move on, next slide, please. So Mi Rancho has a few, it's a very, very small project, essentially it would add 420 square feet to the existing kitchen. As well, there's a 92-square-foot kitchen entry addition, it's kind of an open entry from the outdoor dining area, you would go into this covered area, and then you would be able to enter the kitchen from there. And as well, it includes 166-square-foot outdoor covered bar, and that bar would be located in the exist, within the existing outdoor dining area. There is a bar inside already, a full bar, that allows for spirits as well as beer and wine. They would be able to conduct that business at that outdoor bar during, when the outdoor dining area is open. And then it would also convert two parking spaces into the required bicycle parking and motorcycle parking, that's required as part of outdoor. Just so that where this is a design review package, the restaurant and bar are permitted by right, so we're not, you know, we're not evaluating whether or not the restaurant and bar can exist, they are permitted by right. However, we are talking about changes to the outdoor dining area. That area is, does require a use permit, and it was approved in 1993. And then specific to this- And then, specific to this particular business or restaurant and bar, it was actually a different restaurant and bar in 2006. But at that time, and this is going to become, I think, relevant as we proceed with the discussions, both a nightclub, and a nightclub is an establishment that serves alcohol and also has entertainment. And that could take the form of live music, comedy shows, dancing. So anytime you're serving alcohol with entertainment, our code defines that as a nightclub, which is a little bit different than just a restaurant that sells, that sells alcohol along with food. And they also requested extended hours retail, which means they requested the right to operate past 11:00 PM. The Planning Commission in 2006 denied that request for the nightclub, for the entertainment, and the extended hours retail. And that was largely because of the concern with noise. And noise has been kind of an issue out there. It's something that we, the police department, has received complaints about. Next slide, please. This is the location. It's at the very north side of Katati, along Commerce Avenue, just after you go through, you pass the on-ramp for Highway 101 North. And next slide. And then, just zooming in, this is the site. You can see Highway 101 to the west. To the north is mixed-use development with retail and housing. Pretty much all housing located to the east of the property. And then to the south, we have both some non-conforming, single-family residents, as well as the crossroads retail center and the gas station at Grabenstein Way. If you look at the property, you'll see that there's basically a field on the eastern part of the property. It's undeveloped. There's a small shed on there, which is, it's very old and in poor condition. And then there's a single-family home, and then there's a paved parking area and a gravel overflow area. And then you can see the restaurant, which is kind of, if you're looking at the property, it's, it's all the way to the west and the north, kind of northerly, westerly corner of that property, all the way tucked down on the corner. Next slide, please. That's a picture of the restaurant. This is the view. The colors are a little bit different today, but otherwise it looks pretty much like that. Next slide, please. This is a site plan of the area. Again, you can see how the parking is delineated on the paved area and the gravel area. This just is, shows how you could do a parking count, but the parking is not delineated in that area. And you can see the restaurant and the, you know, outdoor dining area out there in the top left of that image. And we'll look at that a little closer. Next slide, please. Is our existing elevations. So the top one is if you were looking at the restaurant from the parking lot, from the gravel parking lot area, looking north is what it looks like today. It's just kind of a 1970s building with the mansared roof. And if you were, and then the bottom image is if you were on East Katati Avenue, excuse me, on Commerce Boulevard and looking east. That's the image that you would see there. However, there was a fence that runs along Commerce, so this view is obscured. And then, next slide. And these are the additions placed against those elevations that you just saw. So looking towards, looking at the south elevation, which means looking north, so kind of from that parking lot area, you'll, you can see the kitchen addition. And essentially, it extends all the way down and would meet up with the sidewalk. And if you look at the bottom right image, you can kind of see how that would approach the sidewalk. So rather having the fence come along the building would be a little more L-shaped and approach the sidewalk. This is actually something that staff asked them to do, because we wanted to bring it closer to what's called for in the downtown-specific plan, which requires building up to the sidewalk. So rather than stop short and just have the wall, this kitchen entry was added to kind of create this, kind of a more of a feature, and bring the building right to the sidewalk, as well as create a forecourt area, which becomes the outdoor dining area. Which are, and all of this is, and especially with the Spanish mission style, is allowed by the downtown-specific plan. So the color scheme basically remains the same as what's out there today. At any rate, this is how it would look in these elevations. On the right, you can see, on the bottom image, on the right-hand side, you can see kind of the covered area that's with basically two posts would support a roof over that bar area. Next slide, please. This is a floor plan. Next. This area that is highlighted in red is the, is the outdoor dining area. Next. That blue rectangle is the kitchen addition that would be added to the building. Next. And that is the kitchen entry, that second blue square. Next. And that would be the addition of the bar. Again, the bar that is being added would be located within the outdoor dining area. And next slide, please. With respect to it, I do want to highlight the fact that we did receive a letter of concern about the project. It's related to noise. And I shared with the author of the letter some of the conditions of approval that were going in. This was something that we identified in our review. So I just want to highlight some of the conditions of approval that are included with it. We really have no objection to the, to the design changes, but the changing in the operation of the outdoor bar was something we wanted to make sure was controlled. So, one, we wanted to remind the applicant, because we're talking about 15 years and a different party, that, that live entertainment or, you know, DJ-type activities are not permitted inside or outside the restaurant. And that was a conscious decision by the Planning Commission in 2006. Further, that restaurant and bar cannot operate past 11:00 PM. They would need approval for extended hours retail in order for that to occur, which was denied in 2006. And then, the next three, and that's condition number one, when you start to look at the resolutions. Conditions four, five, and six come from the police department. And that is that the outdoor bar, if approved, shall not operate after nine o'clock. That's why, so at nine o'clock, people can have last call. And then dining would be shut down at 10:00. We identified 10:00 as the shutdown period, because that is when the noise limits change. So prior to 10:00, there's a greater latitude for noise. After 10:00, the acceptable noise levels drops. And so that's where we felt like 10:00 was a good time to stop the outdoor dining. In addition, we added that no music shall be broadcast in the outdoor dining area. So this would include ambient music, not, we're not talking about DJ-type music or live music, but just ambient music. So no music broadcast in the outdoor dining area. And then, there is currently that the Public Works Department is working with the property owner to get the sidewalk and driveway apron repaired. They are not in good shape. And so Public Works notified them in February that that needs to be repaired. My understanding is they're going through that process right now with the Public Works Department. And next slide, please. So our recommended action is that you adopt a resolution approving preliminary and final design review for the kitchen addition, kitchen entry, and Mi Rancho Bar as conditioned by staff or as you may wish to condition the project for your, next slide. And that's it. That's all I have. And I am available for questions. I did see that the architect is also online, so you may direct some questions to them. I don't know about the owner or not. But anyway, there are people available to answer questions. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the overview. We'll start with questions from the commission, starting with Commissioner Moore.
I just had a question about the outdoor dining. So the outdoor dining in the kitchen, is that all kind of connected, JP? Were the entrance of the kitchen, I didn't really understand, like...
Where the entrance is today? I would say it is not well-connected. If, if you look, I mean, I've not spent time there, so I'm only reviewing the plans, but the good location to get the answer would be on page 34 of your packet.
Yeah, I'm just looking, my question is for the new addition.
Oh, so the new addition would have, would allow direct access into the kitchen from the outdoor dining area. Right.
Okay, that's what I was looking, because you had it going all the way to the sidewalk. And I'm like, well, that doesn't really make sense unless it's all connected to...
So if you look at page, what page is it in the packet? Or we can go back a few slides to those elevations.
I'm looking at the conceptual site plan, so you kind of have it there.
Go, go two more pages and look at the elevations.
Okay.
So that top image, kind of the long image, everything left of the building there is actually within the outdoor dining area. So it's, you would walk through that open arched doorway right in the dining area, and that gets you into that little entry area. And then from there, you can turn right into the kitchen.
Okay. That just makes more sense. That makes a better design.
Right, it does. I think it's going to function quite nicely. And then there's a wait station right outside that door, kind of against the wall of the new kitchen addition.
Okay. And then, I see that there's outdoor, so the bar has outdoor seating, like, like, like bar stools or something? Is that like a regular, if you like, regular bar?
That's my understanding. So you would be able to sit around it, I think there's 10, let me count real quick again. Yeah, 10 seats, that's what's shown in the image, that could sit around the bar. It is located within the outdoor dining area, so they're not expanding the outdoor dining area. They're just simply placing this bar within the outdoor dining area. Again, they better serve their customers outside.
Okay.
And I will say, this is something that, especially at staff, we really like to see more use of the outdoor spaces around, especially when it comes to restaurants. The outdoor dining areas just, because always, all, anytime we can do this, it contributes to the walkability, the livability, the kind of the liveliness of our downtown. And, and it's something that we like to see at the staff level. We do concern ourselves about noise and try to condition things appropriately. But in general, this is, it is kind of a project that we actually like to see.
Great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Moving on to Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, are there any pictures of the sidewalk by any chance?
I don't, you mean, we're, you know what? If we go all the way back to the very first kind of opening slide here, if we could, that might have, I'll go back. I mean, all the way to the beginning. One more? There. Nope. I'm sorry. This isn't the image I wanted. You were right. Go to the photograph that was in there a little bit further.
I was kind of wondering if the sidewalk right now, that needs repair.
No, the sidewalk doesn't need repair, other than right where the driveway apron is. And unfortunately, this image cuts it off right beneath that kind of post right there in the center. But yeah, you can kind of see how the sidewalk moves to the west of the building. But that's the best image I have of the sidewalk.
And does the owner believe that having an outdoor bar will have, attract more people to the restaurant?
I haven't spoken to the restaurant operator. I've only spoken to the architect, and that was my understanding.
Okay. I found my question right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez.
I think there's also some response to COVID, as well as just how people's habits have kind of changed and preferring the outdoor dining lately.
Thank you. Moving on to Vice Chair Lemus.
Hi, thank you. Just have a few comments. So I, yeah, I do see the changes, and I kind of see it as kind of a remodel streamlining the amenities that everybody has. Because I have eaten there before, and I did notice that they have the one entry in the front and the servers and everyone uses that same door. So it's very congested. So I think that having a kitchen aside, from what I see in the plans, it looks like it's going to alleviate some of the, you know, kind of streamline. So it looks like a good remodel. I know the bars aren't very close, but again, I think it'll streamline some of the congestion and people kind of going back and forth. And then one of my questions to and comments was that this isn't an addition to the space, it's only a remodel, kind of? I think I saw something where it talked about, it doesn't increase the addition, but it just, in fact, it's a slight decrease?
Yeah, so when we calculate, for example, parking for a restaurant, we calculate the square footage of an outdoor dining area, and that would be where the patrons actually are. And we calculate the square footage of the indoor dining area, and then do a calculation to determine how much, how much parking is required. So in this case, they're actually slightly reducing the outdoor dining area where patrons can be served because they, because of the bar. So it's a slight reduction in, in the floor area, the way we calculate parking needs.
Okay, thank you.
And then the kitchen, the kitchen is also an addition, but it does not, from my, from what I can discern, it does not affect the outdoor dining existing or proposed. It just makes no change. It kind of comes right up to where the dining ends today, so.
Okay. And then I saw and appreciate the conditions of approval, that some of them have already been in place. So I just like to say that I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lemus. I just have one follow-up question to what we've already heard here. The gravel parking lot next door on the property, or I think it's on the property, but just next door to the regular parking lot, is that going to be paved? Or were you just showing, I didn't quite capture, if you were just showing what the parking lot would look like, or, and it will remain the same? Or that area is going to be paved?
Currently, there's, there's no plan that we have to pave the lot, and we didn't require it as a condition of approval. And we were concerned that if, had we, well, one, we didn't know if it was necessary to pave that whole area for occasional cars. And two, we thought the cost would probably exceed the cost of the project that they were actually proposing. So we didn't push it at staff, and we've heard not, have not heard that they intend to pave that area.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. With that, we will open it up to public question and comments.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. For our attendees tonight, just use your raise hand icon, and if you're dying...
For our attendees tonight, just use your raise hand icon, and if you're dining inside our room, please. Mayor Avalo, go ahead.
Actually, this is Russell Bunch from Avalo Bunch Architects. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so basically, you are very much correct. Right now, all the drinks, whether they're alcohol or sodas or whatever, have to come from the bar from the inside. So it's very congestive to bring all that stuff from the bar through the entry to the restaurant and back out to where everybody's dining. So what they're proposing is to move that out there, and persons can also eat at the bar and drink at the bar while they're on the outdoor dining. And as far as the addition for the kitchen, right now, there is an existing freezer box that they would like to get located in their kitchen, so that can actually access it better. And then the entire kitchen, under a separate permit, is going to be remodeled with all new equipment, so that they can better utilize their very limited kitchen space. As far as the paving, they are not proposing to pave, to pave any of that, that's basically used for overflow parking. And like I said, like JP said, we're just proposing to change a couple of spaces and make the outdoor, or the parking for the motorcycles and bikes as part of the requirement. And we agree with all the conditions of approval, and I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Buncher, we appreciate that.
Chair Murphy, that will end public comments.
Okay. Then we will move back to the commission and open it up for any additional questions or comments, starting with Commissioner Moore.
I don't have any other questions. I do feel like it's, I'm loving that places are not going someplace else, they're actually just remodeling in town and staying here. I think this is a great, great thing for our businesses and for our town. And I agree with Commissioner Lemus that definitely gets crowded in that bar and restaurant. I've been in there with my kids, and you can't really move, so I think taking some of that outside is going to be great for this restaurant. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, I, I think, I read the letter that the residents from the condominium right next door, and, um, I'm just a little, maybe, a little concerned about the noise level for them. And I think someone mentioned that the police has been called a few times because of the I'm just a little hesitant about that, but with the conditions of cutting service for alcohol at nine, I believe it was, I think, I hope that that can cut down with the noise
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Rodriguez?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Vice Chair Lemus?
Um, no, no other comments, I'm just glad that staff worked with the architect, the owners to work out additional items. So, I think it's a...
Thank you. And I will agree that it's always exciting to see our local businesses growing and kind of expanding outdoor space. It's one of the things I love about our restaurants downtown. And living so close to downtown, I'm certainly sensitive to concerns with noise. I think that a lot of our downtown restaurants and businesses have done a great job at figuring out how to balance that out with nearby community members living so close, and still being able to provide great opportunities for socialization and eating out without being disruptive. So it sounds like the conditional items that you mentioned, JP, will make a real difference in making sure that hopefully there's no additional interruption or disruption to the nearby community. And with that, we will close out our comments here and ask for a motion on this resolution.
I'll make a motion. For the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Gattani approving preliminary and final design review for four hundred and twenty-seven square foot kitchen addition, and ninety-two square foot kitchen entry, and a hundred and sixty-six square foot outdoor bar at seventy-six hundred Commerce Boulevard. I'll make that change, that anything that says Avenue will be changed to Boulevard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Okay. Moving into our next item, item F three, which is review of planning commission bylaws.
Thank you, Chair Murphy, and members of the commission. This is Noah House, community development director of the city here. As identified, item three under matters at hand is review of the bylaws. Specifically, on May twenty-fifth, the last council meeting, the city council voted to move their start time to six P M. So the planning commission generally tries to mirror the city council, and our bylaws, identified in rule seven, specify that the planning commission meetings are intended to start at seven P M. Staff is recommending a change to six P M to mirror the city council's start times. Obviously, that would move us up an hour in the evening. We need to be thoughtful about that for all of our commissioners, make sure you can make that time. And then, we are proposing to keep rule fifteen, which says that generally, commission meetings are to stop at ten P M. However, they can be, that time can be extended by unanimous votes if necessary. But so, it will extend the meeting time potentially by one hour, while allowing that hard stop at ten to remain. We didn't feel a change to shorten the meeting to nine was necessary, wanted to keep that time available for future meetings, but we are recommending that we move the start time to six P M to mirror the council. With that, that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Noah. We will start with questions from Commissioner Moore.
So, since I'm kind of the senior on this, and I've been at these really long planning commission meetings, where we've gone till one or two in the morning, seems like, I appreciate the ten o'clock timeframe. I think anything after ten, people start to lose their focus on things. I'm fine with the six o'clock. I might, at some point, have a work conflict, but I will do my best to be at the six o'clock
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I don't have any problems moving to the six o'clock timeframe. I don't see any time constraints for me.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lemus?
Um, for the most part, there's not a problem. Sometimes we have a presentation that might go up to close at six o'clock. So is there a problem if I signed in a little bit late? Five, ten minutes? Not every meeting, it's just, it may be a conflict sometimes.
Yeah, from the, from the staff perspective, Chair Murphy, I'm sorry if you allow. We're going to try to do a little bit better job of telegraphing our meetings, like, you know, we cancel meetings fairly often with the commission. Try to telegraph the meetings that we intend to hold a little bit more proactively, just so we can try to schedule around those. And if you or in all the commissioners could just keep us aware of your staff, we'll be sure to try to provide the most flexibility to accommodate both.
Thank you. In the case where we do have a commissioner who needs to join late, and I will add to that, six o'clock works for me, although I know that it is definitely budding up to kind of our working hours. Is there a process that we'll have in place? I mean, do we start the meeting late? Is that an option? Or would we start and just have a commissioner join late if they're running behind in their daily work schedule?
In my experience, the chair would just ask for a few minutes at the beginning of a meeting, you know, with today's ability to keep each other in communication, we would just try to accommodate a few minutes. Obviously, if it was going to be a significant timeframe, we want to respect the public's time and the community's time. But I think it's kind of a balance, and so there's nothing in the bylaws that speaks to that. Staff could try to craft something, or we could just try to play it by ear for a little while and see how it goes, and then if we need to, we could pivot.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I know with the virtual option that we're doing right now, it certainly makes it easy for us to accommodate an earlier hour, so I appreciate the information on how we would handle those situations. And I'm comfortable, you know, kind of trying this, and if we find that it does become challenging with start times, and we need to put something in writing, we could raise that with staff. Noah, is this something we also should open up for public comment?
I think we should ask the public if there's any comments, just because it is a time for the public. In general, this, these meetings are a time for the public to write input, so if they have concerns over that start time, it would be helpful to hear.
Perfect, makes perfect sense. Okay, then we will open it up for public comment, and just a reminder to state your name for the record.
And thank you, Chair Murphy. For our attendees, go ahead and use raise hand icon. Chair Murphy, that will end public comments.
Thank you. I will circle back to the commission one more time before closing out this item. Commissioner Moore, any additional comments on this item?
The only additional comment I have is that if really all of us are having issues trying to get to this meeting on time, then I think, just in my own, like, I think we should circle back to a seven o'clock. I don't feel like it absolutely has to coincide with council, because our meetings don't run as long as city council meetings. But I like the idea of playing it by ear and seeing how it works. I just know a lot of us are still on our workday and sometimes have those issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'm really flexible for whichever time is best for everyone, six, or six-thirty, or seven. I'm really flexible.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lemus?
No additional comments, thank you.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing from the commission is that we will play it by ear, we'll move forward with the six P M start time, and have opportunity to regroup on the issue if needed, if we find that that time is challenging for the group, and can discuss, you know, options of changing things or putting additional context into writing, so that we know how to address the situation if the six P M timeline doesn't work. Noah, do we need to take any other action on this item?
Yeah.
Yeah, the bylaws actually are decided by a vote, so we will take the motion and vote to formalize them. The document itself includes the vote, so there's no resolution, but we will kind of keep track of the vote by, on the document.
Great, thank you. So then, can I get a motion for the item?
I'll make a motion to temporarily change the starting time of the planning commission to five P M.
You're not second.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Thank you. Moving into item G, reports by staff.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. Commissioners, I also have this, I just briefly wanted to give the commission a little bit of an update. And maybe, maybe you may want to reconsider your vote, I guess, after I get this, but we'll talk about that. So the commissioners have, or the staff has decided to cancel the July fifth meeting. The city council canceled their first meeting in July, and it happens to fall on a city holiday, the July fourth holiday is observed on Monday the fifth this year, and so those two things combined, staff used those to support canceling the July fifth meeting, so enjoy your evening off. However, we will be holding a meeting on June twenty-first, and that will be a relatively dense agenda, so just be prepared for that, please commissioners. Keep us up to date on your schedule, I know some of you will be traveling, and so I appreciate that heads up, and we do have four minutes now, so just please keep us up to date on that. But we also are looking at potentially revisiting in-person or hybrid meetings, with the potential for that second meeting in July to be the first one. Nothing's decided yet. Cal OSHA is still working on the kind of COVID guidelines for in-person events and meetings, but we, if there was to occur, that would be the first meeting date that it would occur, so just wanted to let folks know of that. The hybrid format, I will say, the clerk's office, working with the city manager, has prioritized making our meeting formats even post-COVID, able for folks to participate and comment on video, in-person, but remotely, so in real time, I shouldn't say in-person, but in real time. So that way, the clerk's office really prioritized that at the beginning of the whole COVID situation, and so we feel we have the technology in place now to allow kind of some folks to be in-person, and some folks to be via Zoom or on video, so we will have that flexibility at that time. And each commissioner should make their decisions based on their comfort level and their personal needs, but just be aware that that would be the first one if it is to occur. We have not set that yet, but just wanted to put that date in folks' minds. The June twenty-first meeting will certainly be via Zoom, a virtual format. And then finally, I just wanted to identify, I sent an email out to the planning commissioners, but wanted to just reiterate and let the public know that the request for proposals for the housing element update has been published and sent out to a number of consultants who do that type of work. We're hoping to get somebody under contract in August and formally kick off the housing element update process. This document is a very, relatively intensive, usually has a lot of public engagement. This year, obviously, we've seen a lot of issues surrounding housing and the need to respond to a variety of challenges facing the community for housing, and so we do really want to hear from folks. My eye to reviewing the responses will be seeing and looking for some really creative ways to try to get input from people. I think staff has done an excellent job of trying to lay a foundation for that. You know, our original general housing survey had over a hundred respondents. Our visual preference survey for the design guidelines had over seventy respondents. So we've done a good job of laying a foundation for that outreach and to get some input, but I really want to have some kind of engagement that allows conversation and back and forth. kind of engagement that allows conversation and back and forth. So that way, anyone who really wants to understand more about this housing element process and what it's going to mean, can really get a chance to understand it. So just know that that's coming. Once we get that consultant under contract, it will be a relatively intensive process for public meetings, engagement efforts. We will likely have to rezone some properties to increase the allowable density on them or to at least meet the new criteria for the housing opportunity sites that you've heard us talk about. The state has kind of rewritten the rulebook for how housing elements are updated. And so we're going to, it's not like we can kind of take the same process that we've done previously. This is going to be a whole new document and a whole new process to get there. So I'm really excited to see some of the responses we get and I'm going to be looking for some creative opportunities from the consultant to really engage. And also, we'll be bringing that for the commission. Here, a presentation from the consultant to the commission and the city council on their proposed efforts. Get some input from the commissioners on things that they really need to be aware of and then really get it going in the early fall. So that's all I wanted to talk about. Happy to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation, department update.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We'll open it up for questions, starting with Commissioner Moore.
I don't have any questions other than I've just been reading reports just in the paper about different cities suing about the housing element that's going on with the state. So I just find it kind of interesting. I'm following a lot of that information that's in the paper. That's my only comment is this is a hot topic right now.
Thank you Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No, I don't have any question.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lemos?
No, but I just had a question. Is this housing element and RENA two different things related?
That's a great question. So the housing element, among other things, but it's intended to show how the city through policies will meet the housing needs of the community. And you do a housing needs assessment at the beginning to get input from the community and also study some of the demographic issues. But one of the things that's determined to be the need is the RENA. So it will be how we demonstrate that we can build approximately 243 units over the next eight-year cycle, which is right now, our draft allocation. Has been formalized, but that's the draft allocation we've gotten from the state. We had 137 in this current cycle, which ends in, I'm sorry, 2020, the end of 2022. So it's over, you know, 100% increase that we're looking at. But I do feel generally, in light of the whole picture and some of the other increases that some communities have been given, that is a fair and manageable number for Cattani.
Thank you Vice Chair Lemos. Thank you for the updates Noah. And I'm grateful to hear that we're thinking of some options if we do go back in person, how the public can participate remotely if they so choose. So that's nice to see that we're looking into some options there. We will move into item H, reports by the commission. And I will open it up to each of the commissioners to report out on any items that you may have, starting with Commissioner Moore.
I do not have any commission reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I don't have any report.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lemos?
I don't have a report.
Thank you. And I don't have any reports to add this evening as well. Next item is item I, items received after the agenda was posted. And we did receive a letter in concern for the miranchito additions. Lauren, could you provide additional information on where that information can be found after the meeting, since it wasn't sent out originally with the packet?
Chair Murphy and to our attendees and the public, if you'd like to view that letter, you can visit our meeting portal website. And you can go to cattancity.org and it will take you to the meeting portal and you can view the letter under items received.
Thank you very much. And moving, that is the last of our items. So with that, we will close the meeting. Thank you very much and I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Good night.